I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will begin with a public hearing, the Small Cities Grant Program. So the Housing Authority is interested in applying for a Small Cities grant to pay for some much-needed capital projects. And as part of the state's process, we hold a public hearing. And I just wanted to see if there's anyone who would like to speak on this. Ed? I was looking at you the whole time.
Thank you, Eric. So the Simsbury Housing Authority has been fortunate to have received two Small Cities grants, one in 2015 and one in 2017. With those grants, we were able to make some infrastructure improvements at the Dr. O'Neal Murphy Apartments, as well as the Virginia County Residence. However, based upon a capital plan that was completed in 2014, there remains approximately $4 million in capital needs to be addressed over the next 12 years. The majority of this is at the Dr. O'Neal Murphy Apartments. So while it doesn't address all our capital needs, we can address some of those through the 2020 Small Cities Grant. So it is our intent that the 2020 Small Cities Grant will cover the following, and these are all would be at the Dr. O'Neal Murphy Apartments. It's our intent to replace all the exterior doors, which are the original, back from 1973. We also want to replace all of the windows. All of these would be energy-efficient. At the same time, we want to install lever handles in accordance with the ADA on all of the doors, the new doors that we would be putting in. Replacement of the main electrical panel. So the main electrical panel, which is currently housed in the community building, is 12 years beyond its useful life. So when we talk about these things, we're talking about, Kent will probably mention as well, we're talking about health and safety types of issues. The exterior pole lighting in the roadway needs to be replaced. When they were originally put in, they were not put in on concrete pillars. So as a result, they are now slowly sinking into the ground. We also, as long as we're going to replace the electrical panel, it is our intent to also look at a small generator for the O'Neal Murphy Community Building. Currently, as you know, the Virginia County Residence by state statute has to have a generator, which we do, that was purchased two years ago with the Small Cities Grant. It's mandated by the state. We do that. Also, you may know that the Virginia County Residence is a secondary shelter for the town. Our thought behind having a generator at the community building would also expand upon the availability to have not only our residents, but residents in the community on a short-term basis, be able to use both of those facilities in case there is a prolonged shortage. And lastly, we wanted to look at converting 35 of the apartments. We have 70 at O'Neal Murphy Apartment, 35 from tubs to walk-in showers. Our population is obviously getting older, as well as we do provide housing for persons with disabilities. Again, tubs are the original, back when Murphy was built, in 73 and 74. So this only makes sense that we try to accommodate the residents by virtue of doing this. So I want to introduce Kent Lewis, Kent's principal with the Housing Development Team, who's going to assist with the application, as well as program administration. So Kent.
So I'll try not to repeat anything that was just said. As I am Kent Lewis, and with the Housing Development Team, we do various funding applications and grants throughout the state, New England, both federal, state, local, pretty much any kind of grant that you could go after to help with low-to-moderate income housing. This CDBG grant is, you know, there's many different communities that compete for this. One thing, the maximum you can apply for, for a Small City CDBG, which is this one, is a million five at this point. Our estimates are much lower than that at this point, so we're just basically asking to, that we could request up to that. And as we get more plans, specifications, and more details on costing in the next month and a half, we'll narrow that number down to see really what it is, after all, soft costs and hard costs. The main goals of these funding sources is a lot of what was just discussed, primarily to help reduce energy consumption, increase health and safety to residents, and remove architectural barriers that have handicap-accessible activities. So everything that is on the list of activities that we're doing is following all of those things, to make sure that, you know, we can change the windows and doors to, you know, not just for safety, but also for energy costs, remove the architectural barriers with the handles and the tubs to, into showers. And then, obviously, the new generator and exterior lighting and electrical panels are clearly a health and safety issue. So all of the work will be done with residents in place. They may be asked to leave for a few hours, but we've, we do a lot of these. We have three of these in process right now throughout the state, removing the tubs, putting in the new shower. They lose their bathroom for a few hours, but they get it back at night. It might not be fully done, but it'll be usable, that they'll still have a toilet and a sink to be able to go forward. So we make sure that the residents can get back into their units every day. And in many cases, they're there during the rehab activities. Some of the other stuff, the windows and doors, those are fairly easy to do. So at least there's not, there's not anybody getting displaced, or we need to deal with relocation or anything like that. So again, everyone at this development is a low-to-moderate income, so we're assisting 100% people that are families that are low-to-moderate. Typically, our construction, when we get into it, once we get the funding, which takes forever, you know, we're about, we'll be applying in about two months. We won't hear until next fall, and then by the time we get a state contract, we'll be probably this time next year. So nothing happens fast in the state of Connecticut, as we all know. But we'll, the construction, you know, we're typically doing these in six to nine months. We, you know, we have to go to procurement and get a contractor, and then we move forward. So that's pretty much it that I have on my list, and then if anybody has any questions, I can come back up and answer them.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak as part of this public hearing? Cheryl.
Cheryl Cook, 15 Newbury Court. I'm also newly the vice chairman of the Board of Commissioners for the Simsbury Housing Authority. And I just, I appreciate all of the support this board has always given the Housing Authority. This grant is particularly important because these renovations are not something that's going to be a luxury for these people. These are their front doors and their bathrooms. Those electrical panels are a health and safety issue, and the generator is to provide support should the power go out, because they have medications that will need to be refrigerated. So while we're thinking about this, this is really the only place in Simsbury that provides housing for people of this level of income. And I know all of us have heard, why isn't there any low-income housing? Well, this is it. This is the only place, and we need to stand behind them. The town does not provide any direct funding for the authority. It's a state-funded housing authority. There are in-kind services that are provided, but it's essential that you maintain your support in any way you can, so that they get this grant.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on now to public audience, Joan. I'd ask residents and public audience to limit their comments to five minutes tonight. Thanks.
Joan Cook, 26, Wickham Drive. At the last Board of Selectment meeting, First Selectman Eric Wellman gave reasons for not approving the reappointment of Jason Levy to the Conservation Commission. Although First Selectman Eric Wellman has stated on a number of occasions that he is for diversity, he appears not to be tolerant of diversity of opinions. First Selectman Eric Wellman stated, anyone who serves on a commission should not speak adversely about the town, since when does adversity in speech nullify anyone from participating in town government? First Selectman Eric Wellman instituted a Facebook page for the town with people able to express their opinions. It appears that only people who agree with Eric Wellman should comment. According to First Selectman Eric Wellman, anyone who comments unfavorably about the town is representatives or any public comments and public audience, Facebook, or other social media pages, should not be allowed to be appointed to any Board or Commission. Jason Levy has served on the Conservation Commission favorably throughout his term. He is a, as a paid elected official, First Selectman Eric Wellman should uphold the constitutional rights of all people. Why does First Selectman Eric Wellman feel the need to deny people their First Amendment rights? Eric Wellman is a self-appointed speech saw. Although First Selectman Eric Wellman did not vote for Jason Levy's appointment, he did get the votes to continue his service to the town. On January 28, 2020, Chief Bolter had a celebration for Police Officer Gronski, who graduated from the Police Academy, June 26, 2019. At the beginning of the presentation, Chief Bolter asked a priest to officiate a prayer. Everyone was asked to stand and bow their heads in prayer. This is very unusual, since this has never been done in Simsbury at meetings or celebrations. According to Chief Bolter, it was his decision, not the policy of the Police Department. It appears the only people needing divine intervention is Chief Bolter and Town Manager Maria Caprioli, and this prayer session is, was inappropriate. Under the Freedom of Information Act, I requested several files from the town that have been delayed for several months. As a result of the delay of viewing the files, I have filed a complaint with the Freedom of Information Commission, asking for a hearing before the Commission, and imposed a fine of $1,000 on the town for delay in access to files in violation of the Freedom of Information Act. Many of the requests are internal investigations in the Police Department. I have received the police internal affairs investigation of Sergeant Trumbly, who was terminated by Chief Bolter in the Police Commission. I requested the investigation of Officer Morano's vandalized locker and findings. The request for internal investigation of Officer Russell's and Sergeant Sagan's shotgun incident. There is also an internal affairs investigation of Sergeant Corcoran relating to Mark Rustick's building superintendent incident and his paid medical leave that I will request. Another internal affairs investigation of Officer Trevor Bertell on salary discrepancies that I will request. On December 9, the Police Commission approved the appointment of Cory Thomas, our first black officer, who was a police officer in New Britain. Chief Bolter stated at the meeting that he thought Cory Thomas was, quote, "a good fit for the Simsbury Police Department," end quote. Cory Thomas abruptly quit the Simsbury Police Department after only two months, allegedly stating he felt the Simsbury Police Department was not a good fit for him, and he will return to New Britain Police Department. During the month of February, there'll be several hearings with the police union. The findings should result in the return of Sergeant Trumbly to the Simsbury Police Department. I have requested the Labor Attorney files and paid invoices. None of these files have been included in the 2019-2020 budget. I have requested exit letters from past employees, letters to and from, Commission of Union Rights and Opportunities, on Gregory Ducey's complaint, and Janelle Mullin's personnel files. Robin Newton still has a pending claim against Town Manager Maria Caprioli. Robin Newton will eventually return to her job in Simsbury. Chief Bolter and Town Manager Maria Caprioli has continually abused their power and should be removed from their office. The taxpayers can no longer continue to pay for investigations and lawsuits against the town and the Police Department. The taxpayers have no confidence in both Chief Bolter and Town Manager Maria Caprioli for their failed leadership. The Board of Selectmen should vote to remove Town Manager Maria Caprioli, and the Police Commission should vote to remove Chief Bolter. Why has the Board of Selectmen ignored a failed leadership? Why has the Police Commission stood behind Chief Bolter with the department under constant investigations and a failed leadership? All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Pat's Twitter at Joan Cook, and news feed on Facebook for review. Thank you for listening.
Who else would like to speak? Yes, please.
Diane Nash, 5 Marywood. Excuse me. Tonight, I bring to you a concern, and hopefully through STTV, spread of the concern I have to the general public. We paid to have a survey done, a parks, open space recreation plan to be developed. The group that did this survey did a good job. They brought the survey to the public. They brought the results under public audience to the public, under public announcement. And two comments stood out when they delivered the results of the survey, both of which had to do with the interaction on the part of the town. I guess we were unusual in our percentage of people who answered such a long survey, completed the long survey. And the second thing they noted in their overall picture of the town was how involved the residents were, and how important open space and passive recreation was to the residents. Unsolicited, they gave the results of this survey, the percentages. They have since drafted a draft copy of their recommendations, based on what the public said was important. There were two things I'm going to mention tonight. There were more than that in the recommendations, which are not only not supported by the survey, but are in direct opposition to the survey percentages. I went back and read each of the categories, and I don't know where they came up with the recommendation. But the two I'm going to mention tonight are consistent with two things that have happened in the last week or two. One is Goal 1, 1.4 on there, return to adjacent property owners, open space, random pieces. They never belong to the adjacent properties. That's listed as a moderate priority. Goal 7, 7.1, is listed as a high priority, the sale of orphaned open space pieces. It is these very orphaned open space random pieces that create the look and feel of Simsbury. I happen to live in one of the subdivisions that is in an R40 zone, and was reduced to an R30 zone, so we could group these extra quarter acres into random orphan spaces. They provide buffers, they provide cul-de-sacs, that I know Public Works hates cul-de-sacs. They provide little strips of property, and a neighborhood sort of play areas, too, and access then to many of the walking trails.
Diane, about 30 more seconds. Just about, I just wanted to give you a heads up. Thanks.
What worries me is part of the thing with Public Works is they have been given responsibility that they should not have, to determine when a homeowner calls up and says, you know what, there's a tree on our open space behind me that's going to hit my picnic table that they put there that shouldn't belong there. So part of the problem of the cost of Public Works doing this is not their job to do, and we put it on there. I don't know whether that's part of the driving force. I do know this week on the Planning Commission, there's an item, the sale of 133 Holcombe Street open space piece of land. I know last week, last meeting-
Diane, that's about five and a half minutes.
-you gave another source, a piece of land. They had every right to use it. We've given them the right to use it. Why we gave them a piece of land, I don't know. So I worry that we're on a slippery slope of giving away open space pieces.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak, public audience? Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Liz Beamer. I live at 13 Surrey Circle, and I have been in contact with First Selectman Eric Wellman about banning plastic straws from Simsbury's restaurants. I feel very strongly about this as a mother of young children, and worried about the impact that it has on our environment. And I feel this is a very simple move that we can do here in Simsbury, starting with restaurants, and maybe rolling into schools and other things to improve our environment in the world. It takes 200 years for a straw to decompose, and in America, we use 500 million straws a day. There are many towns in Connecticut that are banning plastic straws and other styrofoams, and I think this is an easy thing that we could do here in Simsbury.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for public audience tonight? Okay. So we'll move on to our first of two presentations. The first one is going to be given by our Public Works Director, Tom Roy. MIRA is looking at redeveloping its waste-to-energy facility, which is essentially beyond its useful life, and they are looking for towns to issue a non-binding statement of interest. There's no action that we need to take tonight, but my hope is that we will have the information we need to take action at our next meeting. Before we turn things over to Tom, Mike, I believe, is going to recuse himself from this item.
Well, actually, what I'm going to do is I'm going to step away from my seat up here on the board. I'm going to go over and stand by Tom. I'm going to make myself available to answer questions. I will ultimately recuse myself when a vote comes up, because I don't feel it's appropriate. But frankly, having lived my entire life dealing with this trashy issue, I bring a lot of expertise here, and I want to be able to share it, so the town can make, frankly, the best decision they can make with as much information as they can.
Right.
So with the board's agreement, I will do that.
Sure.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Well, don't worry, I'm not going far.
It's okay. And then he said, go sit over there.
Welcome to this side of the podium, Mike. Wow, I feel much smaller.
Mike, state your address, please.
Let's see, 70 Payne, 72 Holcombe Street.
Okay, all right. Well, so it's a kind of a complicated issue tonight. We all deal with our trash that we generate, and we bring it to the curb once a week, and usually there's somebody kind enough to pick it up, and it goes away. Just like so many things in Public Works, we're about making things go away, and the hard part is what happens behind the scenes, and making sure it's being done responsibly. So MIRA has come to all of the member towns with a request for a $330 million upgrade to their existing facilities that are located in the South Meadows. The facilities include a waste-to-energy facility. We will potentially use the term "waste-to-energy" and "trash-to-energy" interchangeably tonight. For many, many years, it was called "trash-to-energy," but I guess they found it sounds a little bit more appealing when it's "waste-to-energy." And it's also upgrading all of their recycling facilities, and they also are looking at a long-term solution, which will deal with food waste, and how to break that down and recapture some of the energy from the wasted food. The challenge is going to be, is if they come through with the proposal as currently planned, it's going to result in our tip fees. The cost of the actual disposal is going to go up to $145 a ton. We are significantly below that currently. The challenge is also that they are asking for a non-binding statement of interest from all of the municipalities that are interested in participating in this program by the end of this month, and they will be looking for a binding 30-year commitment by June of 2020. So right around the corner, they're looking for a 30-year commitment, and unlike our current agreements with MIRA, this would not have any opt-out provision. So we're in for the long haul if we decide to go this route. A little bit of background, MIRA, many of you may have heard of it, and its former life was CRRA. CRRA built the Mid-Connecticut facility, which is this trash-to-energy facility, back in the mid-'80s. It had 70 or 71 towns participating in that. They issued 25-year bonds, and the municipalities were effectively the owners of this facility, and it ran very well for a number of years. The challenge is now, it is well beyond its useful life. Even the members of the MIRA board will tell you that it's held together with duct tape and glue and a few other odds and ends and bolts and screws. Last summer, this facility that has two turbines that use the heat from the burning trash to generate electricity, one of the turbines was down for a major overhaul. While that was going on, they had down, they were down to one turbine, so half of their operating facility is relying on this turbine. They had to take the system down because it relies on river water for cooling. Every now and then, they have to clean the screens, very routine operation. When they do this, the turbine which is spinning automatically draws oil to lubricate all the bearings. As it slows down, they have to turn on a pump, so that the oil will still go to the bearings as these giant pieces of equipment slow down to a stop. As the equipment slowed down, that pump, that lubricating pump, never turned on. And as the bearings heated up, they created dust, metal particles, which then went into the electrical windings. And if you can imagine, it was just a cascade of failures that occurred. So for most of the summer last year, they were unable to process any trash at that facility. They ended up having to look at emergency contracts to ship the waste out of state, and in doing so, they burned up millions of dollars of their reserve funds. But it was a great example, unfortunately, of how important that facility is to the state of Connecticut. It's responsible for about a third of the solid waste in Connecticut, and without it, our options can become limited very quickly. We needed to picture someone here. I knew it was kind of a boring topic, but this is the waste-to-energy facility. You can see in the background in the upper left, that's Brainerd Airport, just to give you a sense of where this is located on the river. It's not going to make anybody's architectural digest, but it's a very efficient plant at what it does. So tip fees, back in 2017, we entered a 10-year agreement with MIRA for our municipal solid waste, or trash. Currently, we're paying $83 a ton. They're going to be setting the tip fees for next year. We expect them to be in the range of $87 to $101 per ton. What's interesting is, within the 50 or 51-member communities of MIRA, several of them have to use transfer stations. So the ones along the shoreline, their local haulers bring the trash to a-
Facility.
Transfer station.
Transfer station. It gets dumped there, other trucks then haul it all the way up here to Hartford. The cost of doing that is significantly higher than bringing trash from Simsbury directly to the facility in Hartford. MIRA's overriding philosophy has been, I think they use the term "to socialize the cost, everybody pays the same fee." Part of the rationale for that is, in order to operate that waste-to-energy plant, they need waste. They need a certain minimum volume of municipal solid waste each and every day. But in doing so, we're effectively paying for some of those shoreline communities, which would have had a longer haul distance up to Hartford. I know they are looking at that closely, especially as we talk about some of the challenges that are coming up. MIRA knows right now that the number that we're talking about today of $145 a ton is beyond the current market rate in Connecticut. They believe that they need to bring in a project that is closer to $95 a ton, and no cost for recyclables, to be palatable to most municipalities. It's also important to realize, MIRA sells the electricity they generate. Many years ago, under the Mid-Connecticut project, I think they were selling it for eight cents a kilowatt hour, out onto the grid. For a short time, they're getting some numbers even up as close as 11 cents per kilowatt hour. Right now, they're selling it on the open market at three to four cents per kilowatt hour. So it is no longer generating the financial revenues that electricity used to generate for them. The other thing they do that's unique down there is they have four, you're going to love this, jet-engine-powered generators, that during times in the summer when we need more electricity to the grid, they turn on these jet engines. It generates an enormous amount of electricity to cover short-duration periods where the grid does not have enough energy. Right now, that's generating enough revenue that it's offsetting the cost of our MSW disposal by about $19 a ton. The problem is, those large jet engines are only going to be allowed to operate due to air quality restrictions until 2023. There is no ability to renew the permits to keep those jet or pack generators- There is no ability to renew the permits to keep those jet or pack generators in operation.
How are they fueled when they go on? By electricity? No, by the jet fuel? What's that?
CNG.
CNG. So is the, is the, is there, are they just inefficient? And that's why they're not allowed to come back on? Or is that kind, is that type of energy generation just going away entirely?
There's just been, over the last few years, there's been such a increase in air quality regulations for all generators like this. It's even limited what we used to be able to participate in a similar program on a much, much smaller scale with a large generator that we have at the WPCA. We used to get put on notice when there were times where the grid needed power. We would run our generator and we would be paid for that energy.
Okay, so I'm sorry for getting far afield, but you brought it into the conversation. So what's, what is, what in, what year, 2021?
2023.
2023. So when those are, when those go offline permanently and then we have, what are they being replaced with? To facilitate whatever the grid needs?
They're not being replaced.
So we just need to turn our thermostats up? The grate in the summertime? Or it's, you know, be in the summertime. So what's the
That's, that's really more of a, I would say, an ever-source and national grid issue.
So that's not something that's going to be coming into play as far as some other part of the paradigm we've got to solve for?
It's just part of the picture.
But it is that we're losing the $19 a ton supplement.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So can I just understand, I know nothing about the pollution, but it's cleaner to burn trash than it is to burn compressed natural gas?
No, it is not. Well, actually, I take that back. Technically, it is cheaper to burn the trash because they have what are called baghouses and filters where they filter everything that goes out.
So it ends up being cleaner that way?
Ends up being cleaner. There is also a deep, you have to get approvals from the Connecticut Department of Energy in order to have these CNG jet packs to spin the turbines.
And just for clarification, Tom, for the public, and really, that's me hiding behind, that's me. The conversation that you're pointing out here relative to Sims Berry and entering into agreements and such, this is for the waste that the town of Sims Berry itself generates? Produces? Or also our residents? Because our residents feel, our residents, like I do, contract with private haulers. So
No, it's important you bring that up. In many ways, compared to so many, because within the Public Works community, and Diane left after she got me in Public Works a few times. Within that, we've all been talking about what the right answer is to this and what different communities' liabilities are. In many ways, Sims Berry is better positioned than most other municipalities because our businesses are going to be affected by this. Our residents are going to be affected by this. But because we have subscription haulers, where like you said, you get to choose who your hauler is based upon price or service or maybe who you know. The town itself is not directly responsible, yet we have a responsibility to our residents. Right now, all of the trash that's collected from your house, because we have a contract with MIRA, is flow-controlled. And any hauler operating in Sims Berry picking up from a residential home has to bring their trash to MIRA. Because we, as a community, have decided that's where it's going to go. And the flow control applies only to residential housing. And it only is allowed to be permitted to non-commercial avenues. So it has to be a publicly, or I'm sorry, yeah, publicly, or I'm sorry, private, a municipally-owned facility. So in other words, because MIRA falls as a municipally-owned facility or a municipally-controlled facility, we are legally allowed to divert all of our trash that's generated within Sims Berry borders by residential homes to that facility.
And town buildings.
And town buildings.
So said another way, if we enter into this 30-year binding contract, we're binding our haulers for both the town buildings and the residents to the $145 a ton tip fee on an escalating basis?
Exactly right.
So they still contract with whoever, whichever hauler they want. But that hauler is bound to take the trash to this facility at that rate or higher.
That's exactly right.
And the, the, so the, we agree to a rate, whichever. And regardless of what occurs inside that, the trash haulers have to work inside that economy of pricing. Regardless of what occurs for their economics. Okay.
And it's also important, when you think about, so if somebody's coming around to your neighborhood, picking up your trash, delivering it to the facility in Hartford right now, the cost to dispose it, that tip fee in per ton, is only a fraction of the overall cost. That hauler still has to pay for the very expensive trucks, the drivers, fuel and everything else.
So the, so the, so the tip fee, I love them, Larry, using, how many times am I going to use that term? Tip fee? Is, it will, it can be adjusted up or down, correct? I mean, it's afloat, it's not, we are not locked in. What is the lock-in period? How long is it for?
Right now, we locked in with MIRA in 2017 for a 10-year rate. And they set their tip fee each year at the end of February based upon their cost of operation. So MIRA is effectively, it's a collaboration of all us towns working together to take care of this problem that very few people want to spend the time to focus on. So the MIRA board, I think in the last few years, has really been well-represented. If they've really, I think, improved the overall operation of the organization. And each year, they look at what their total cost of operation is. They divide it up by the number of tons that they have coming in, and they develop that tip fee. And it has been steadily creeping up year over year. We do, under our current agreement with them, we have the ability to opt out. Once it hit, I think, $76, we have the ability to opt out. Right now, MIRA is really setting the tip fee for Connecticut. They are so large that the other, there's four other waste-to-energy facilities. And they're really setting their tip fees in some ways based upon what MIRA is charging.
One thing, Mike, can you speak to, when we, when, this is, I think, the third time I've done tip fees up here. The first time we did this, we actually got paid to send our recycling, right?
For a number of years, MIRA was giving a credit to the town for the recyclables that were delivered.
On a per-ton basis, right?
Per-ton basis.
Was that in like the $12 to $15 range or something like that?
It started out at $10 a ton and then it went down to $5 a ton.
But they basically gave us a check at the end of the year, which we then put into the Clean Energy Task Force, I think?
And Recycling Committee and a few other things.
So that's an important dynamic here. That's changed, right? Because this is, there's a market for all this stuff, right?
Well, there's not.
There was.
There used to be. There used to be a market for it. It has gone. Here's Tom's next slide. So I'll let you go through.
It's okay.
Okay. The recycling market, and within that $145 a ton, is a zero-tip fee on the recycling.
Which is an important component.
Which is a huge component. But as everybody has heard and read, the recycling market is extremely volatile. In 2012, the recycling market was actually paying up to $27.50 for the mixed recycling, which is the single-stream recycling. That number has now completely flipped around. And there are many municipalities right now that are paying $70 a ton for their recycling, where we are paying zero.
Wow.
So there is a huge benefit to that. And there are frankly, a number of municipalities that want exemptions from the state to not have to collect recyclables because they're paying nearly as much for that recycled material to have it handled as they are for their trash.
And part of MIRA's core philosophy is they always want to keep a zero charge on the recycling because they want to encourage people to recycle. At the point, you know, suddenly you start talking about having to pay nearly the same, all of a sudden, maybe people are going to make a different choice on what barrel to put their materials in. And that's certainly not going to be productive long-term.
So what is, not to get too far into it, what does MIRA do with the blue barrel?
They sort the material and they are recycling it.
So they're, they are, it's not just going in the turbines?
It is not going to the trash plant. They will not do that. There is contamination that comes in with the recycling. And what has been going on for the last six months as the tip fee, as recycling markets have really bottomed out, it has been a lot of hopeful recycling. That's why you see people talking about not putting plastic bags in there, not putting the material in plastic bags, no pots and pans. We have had loads of recycling, not from Sims Berry, but from other towns that were rejected. In one case, because somebody put a can of paint in there and then blew apart. In another case, it was a can of driveway sealant, which trashed the whole load. So people are well-intentioned, but they can have a dramatically negative effect on that, all that material that everybody's worked so hard to do it. Also, the composition of the recycling has changed dramatically in the last 10 years. And I call it the Amazon effect. Everybody gets stuff shipped to their home, a lot more cardboard boxes. That was at least, in our case, part of the reason to go to the 95-gallon blue barrel because people didn't have to break down their cardboard boxes as much. And there was also so much more. Years ago, we frankly, used to have three UPS trucks in town 20 years ago. Now we have four UPS trucks plus all the Amazon trucks. So there has been a substantial change in frankly, what goes into the barrels.
And real quick, Mike mentioned Wish Cycling and what you want to recycle and just because it goes in. Connecticut DEEP has a good program of what's in, what's out. I can tell you, I've gone through and read through the website and a lot of the stuff is surprising. And it was done in compilation with some of the processes of the recycling material. Where, you know, the one, the two that stick out to me is the top of your yogurt, that tinfoil, too small for them. They don't want that. That can go in the trash. The yogurt cup into the recycling.
You got to take the label off.
If it has a label, yes.
Yeah.
And then shredded paper. They don't want shredded paper. That's my PSA for tonight.
Can I throw you a plug though? Not to elongate this, but I mean, we do have multiple hazardous waste collections for exactly this reason, because we don't want it in the mainstream, right?
Exactly right.
And so when folks wonder why we do that, why do we talk about it so much? This is exactly why.
And I think Mike brought up a great example where an entire truckload of mixed recycling was transferred from recyclables all to trash by one person making a poor choice.
I mean, how big is a truckload?
Spent all day to fill the truck.
So I mean, how many, give it so, tons?
About eight tons.
Yeah.
Scary. It's unfortunate.
Over one can of paint.
I'm not trying to turn this into a public service message, but it's important to talk about this.
Thank God they didn't pay $70 a ton for it. But I ended up having to pay 70.
Yeah.
I actually think if people knew where their trash went, they would be more thoughtful about what they put in.
I know.
Ask one more? I'm sorry, just because it was relevant for public audience. So if I throw my plastic away in a trash bag, it gets burned?
That's correct. It would, it will be burned. They have, you know, as Mike talked about with the the different things they put on the trash-to-energy plant. I remember back in the '80s, everything was talking about you're burning plastic and you're getting all of the dioxins. They have all kinds of mechanisms there. It is an incredibly sophisticated facility. Where, I was actually trying to get the comparison, and I wanted to be accurate, about the air quality coming out of the top of that stack is far cleaner than it was back in the 1980s. And it's, it's it's amazing. And there used to be some comparison where that enormous smokestack and they compared it to how many SUVs it was. And it's not a big number. It's really not. So as much as, you know, you say, wow, they're burning trash and it must be awful, they're doing it in the most environmentally sensitive way they possibly can. And it's, you know, it's the, it's the paper bag issue at the supermarket. Do you want paper or plastic? And it took somebody to come up with that recyclable canvas bag. And we've all adjusted to not having plastic bags. Someday soon, there's going to be some better options. Similarly, I believe someday, very soon, there's going to be some better options with our recycling. The recycling market was shocked by a very dramatic and sudden change when China said, we're not taking it anymore. And it was an overnight switch. So the capacity within the United States is still being redeveloped right now to make up for that market. And there's going to be a better mousetrap. There is going to be better technology and better ways to separate and sort the glass and get rid of that little bottle cap that should have been on the bottle. And things are going to work better. I just don't know how fast that's going to be. And that's a key component to what we're talking about tonight when we're going to set a fee based upon a 30-year timeframe.
It's a really good point.
The other piece is simplistically, you can put your waste into three things. You can either put it into the ground, that's landfills. Put it in the water, that was the infamous barge that used to haul all our trash out into the ocean and dump it there. And the other is to put it into the air. We have the technology to clean up that air so that it is far cleaner than a number of cars. And it is, and Connecticut is the leader in the northern hemisphere for how much we recycle, the percentage that we do. And we are very close to the top, probably within the top 10, if not the top 5, of the amount of our waste that we burn. And having grown up in this industry, and I do remember when our dump really was a dump, and putting it in the ground. And we are very fortunate, we don't have many of the environmental issues that a number of other towns do. In the '70s, every single town, 169 towns in Connecticut, had their own dump. And I used to spend my day starting at the eastern part of the state, working my way up to the northern part of the state, dumping in every little dump with the trash that I picked up. Going to one facility is a big improvement and you have far better controls, in all honesty. So we really have progressed. And it's not that, these are not sophisticated things. The whole industry has become way more sophisticated than it ever would have.
Well, it used to be a big hole in the ground and you dumped trash into it. When you were done, you covered it over with dirt and you walked away. I mean, now they have liners, they have methane recovery, they have monitoring wells and testing. And, you know, again, there's been big improvements. And unfortunately, the improvements came from some mistakes that have been made in the past. Speaking of which, right now, this slide just kind of talks to the state of Connecticut's MSW and recycling right now. Connecticut DEEP has, in 2016, came up with the Comprehensive Materials Management Strategy, CMMS, going to be filled with acronyms by the end of the night. Some of the key goals, as they stated, is that waste-to-energy is preferred over landfill. They would like the state of Connecticut to be self-sufficient. They do not want to see any of our trash leaving the state borders. They feel that puts us at a disadvantage of control. And there is some challenges that they see as socially unjust to send our trash to other states. I think there's a lot of discussion on that, but that's their opinion. They do not want to see any surplus capacity developed within the state of Connecticut. They do not want to see any new landfills cited if there is not an actual need for them because they feel that would be encouraging the generation of more waste.
So I'm sorry, are there still active landfills in Connecticut?
There are no active municipal solid waste, which is MSW or garbage, in the state of Connecticut. There are several landfills, but they only accept bulky waste. And they are not allowed to get any bigger.
Bulky waste identified like concrete, building materials?
Yes, material from construction.
Construction. Thank you. We touched on this, but recycling is no longer profitable. And electricity at MIRA, that was once priced on the open market, is now at a fraction of what it used to be. So that's where we're at. Now let's talk about where they want to go.
Really happy picture you just painted.
It's okay, we're going to build better from here because all is not lost today. So in 2018, Connecticut DEEP, with the support of the Connecticut State Legislature, put out an RFP for the redevelopment and the long-term maintenance of the waste-to-energy and recycling facilities in the South Meadows. Three firms responded and Sasser Rooney was selected as the redevelopment firm. Sasser is a European company and Rooney is a New York-based construction company. Significant financial wherewithal. Following the RFP process, Sasser Rooney did essentially a deep dive into both the Connecticut market and into the trash-to-energy facility in Hartford. Unfortunately, at the end of their deep dive, they're looking at providing a final plan that would be $145 a ton for MSW, no cost for recycling. So that current fee that we would be paying for recycling is effectively baked into that $145. It would be a 30-year fixed price. It would be subject to cost of living increase. And it would also be subject to any changes that result from a change in law that affects their operational costs. This unfortunately, is not what they originally proposed on when they proposed to Connecticut DEEP. When they were originally looking at this with Connecticut DEEP, they were at a number below $100 a ton. So there is some concern about how did this change and is this right?
How far below?
Way below.
Like the current?
Less than what we currently pay.
Less than 83?
Yes.
65?
They were, they were at, originally, when this process started two years ago, they were quoting $65 a ton.
Wow. This was to rebuild, to pay for a $330 million project? They were going to charge less than they are charging now?
That's right. That's right. I think it was the belief that through privatization and some other things, they felt that they could actually get in there, redevelop and move forward.
Yeah, has there been any articulation of what's changed?
Very little.
Okay.
Good question. Good question.
I think that's what the compost was for. I'm not positive.
So the $330 million project gets you an all-new, or I'm sorry, a fully refurbished waste to energy plant. It's still going to utilize the existing technology that the plant uses, which, just for you, Chris, RDF, refuse-derived fuel. If you head down to the South Meadows, there's a separate facility which takes the trash and literally puts it on conveyor belts and with giant hammers smashes it up into little bits and pieces called refuse-derived fuel. Look, Eric's looking, he goes, you're making this up.
That gives a smaller surface area, burns quicker, right?
And then they mix it with fuel so that it burns better.
And cleaner. And it has to do with the spacing between some of the tubes and things like this and how the facility is actually constructed. Other, other facilities that are waste to energy facility do mass burn, where they eliminate that expensive and labor intense, or I'm sorry, expensive process of making the RDF. To go to a brand-new facility would be close to double the $330 million number. So it didn't, didn't, didn't work out or pan out to be cost-effective. They're going to update and modernize the recycling facilities down in the South Meadows. It's kind of vague what that means. They're going to use state-of-the-art technology. In some ways, we don't know exactly what that is at this point. And there would be a future mechanical or biological waste system to further advance our solid waste program specifically for food waste.
What about the capacity? Does this change capa?
They're going to have an assured reliability in 85% capacity for 30 years.
Yeah, I'm sorry, so the capacity relative to today's capacity, is it doubling?
To the projected capacity over the, over the life of the plant.
Yeah, but let's just say if it just, on day one, when it restarts, is it going to have 60% more capacity than the current one, 30, 10, same capacity?
They're expecting to have the same capacity, probably, they haven't specifically answered that, but my interpretation is that they'll have the same capacity that they have now between the RDF plant and the food composting. And if that's at 100, it also depends on how many towns sign up for this. If only half of the towns sign up and they need half the capacity, they don't need as big a plant. They kind of don't know. That's why this is, my, my opinion, this, that's why this is a two-step process.
Okay. And there's $4 million factored into this per year as payment in lieu of taxes for the city of Hartford.
And then the 250 million Hartford already gets? Never mind.
Yep. This is, this is right off of MIRA's presentation. And part of their answer is how did we get to this $145 a ton? They break it down nicely, about $20 a ton is for the actual construction of the facility. They felt that there was a significant amount of risk to them as the operator of the facility. The transfer station piece is about $12 a ton. We talked a little before that there, there's a cost to that recycling and right now, they're assuming it's $4 a ton. Another great example though, is if there becomes that better mousetrap and recyclables start paying again, that would change that number, but that doesn't necessarily mean they would change the 145.
Doesn't mean we would benefit from it.
Right.
They would.
That's right.
That's what they're banking on.
You have the, about $7 a ton for the $4 million host fee for the city of Hartford. We do not have a publicly-owned ash landfill. I know there was some work on citing one a couple of years ago, it fell through, but right there, that's, that's $10 a ton, which is essentially half the cost of the recapitalization of the facility.
Where does the, so where does the trash?
The ash.
No, it's basically trash to a certain extent. Where did it go? We barge it out to some other?
No, it goes to a huge landfill out in eastern Connecticut.
Okay, so we're still burying something.
We are still burying it. It's a line.
I get it's far less toxic.
Better, yeah.
Could have been, you know, it's a carbon.
Better product.
And they're assuming, as they come up with these numbers, that the power prices, the power that they're generating is going to continue to sell at very low value. Okay. The folks from MIRA themselves don't, don't feel this is viable at $145 a ton. So they're, they're looking at some options to bring it in closer to $95 a ton. They're looking at three key, key options, first of which is to have the state issue general obligation bonds for the project. They are looking to establish a power purchase agreement where Eversource and United Illuminating would be required, forced, to purchase the power generated from the facility at 11 cents a kilowatt hour. They are looking at potentially creating renewable energy credits. Many of you may recall in the past, we've bought renewable energy credits, which is a way of supporting solar and wind projects. This would be putting trash-to-energy facilities that are municipally owned and operated within Connecticut in that same category. The money generated by those recs would then be able to offset essentially $50 a ton is what they're thinking. I think that's a stretch. And then one subset of the power purchase agreement, which I think is probably the one that has the most merit, would be all of the towns that participate and are sending our trash to them, if we could buy our power directly from MIRA. In a power purchase agreement, the same way we could pay money to have a large solar array built in some other town and the town can use that energy, that would probably be the most effective way that we could do it. And again, it's our trash, it's generating our energy, and I, and I think that would be a more practical approach. The one at the bottom, I got to tell you, is, is the least palatable, is that the problem with the $145 a ton is it's not the market rate. So communities that choose not to participate with MIRA can find somebody else to take their trash for about $90 to $95 a ton. So one of the options would be to have the state legislator enact a law or regulations or taxing that would restrict sending any MSW outside of the state borders. So they would effectively inflate the market rate up to meet their current 145.
How does that not violate industry commerce laws though?
That is a very good question.
There's a whole section of our federal government that deals with that.
Yes, interstate commerce law.
Yeah, it's kind of a big deal.
It's a concern.
For the record show, I was not advocating.
Larry's going to make some money on this one.
So we're at $83, sorry.
Yep.
We're $83 a ton and we have an agreement or a contract for another seven years.
We have an agreement that was originally anticipated to go for another seven years. When we hit 2025, this new facility, if this plan goes through, will be in, in place and we would be forced to be at the 145 or we would have to opt out. We have the ability under our current agreement to opt out any year we want to opt out.
And send our trash wherever we want to.
Exactly. With a couple of little asterisks after it.
Which might be a short-term game, based on what you just said.
There's, there's some risk associated with it. So right now, the question is what happens if we, we and all of the other communities right now say this is too big of a gamble, too big of a risk for us to go forward and this redevelopment proposal with Sasser Rooney fails. MIRA would have the option to go out to a new RFP. Remember, the original RFP was issued by Connecticut DEEP. The folks at MIRA, I think, would probably rather issue their own RFP and feel that they are, similar to how Mike lives the business, this is what these people do, they live the business. And it could be to renovate the existing facility. It could be to make a large transfer facility that would be based on sending our trash out of state on rail or on trucks. Said, where does it go if it goes out of state on rail and on trucks? There is a number of large strip mines in Ohio, Pennsylvania, Virginia, which have become large, massive landfills. This is that environmental justice piece. Is it the right thing to do to fill up these strip mines with our trash? But at the same time, you have communities that have these large environmental sores on their landscapes. If our trash goes there, it also comes with funds to hopefully close those facilities up and monitoring them a way that's more environmentally friendly. So there's a big debate on that piece and I don't have the answer, but.
But you're, but that's, but you, I'm sure we have some subset of our community, actually, but that doesn't, that wants to more ethically or responsibly deposit.
Conscious.
You know, dispose of our trash, right? So, so that, so in that instance, you're taking, if we went to that, if we went that route, I'm not advocating, I'm just trying to talk through it. If we went that route, then you're taking consumer choice about how I deal with what I generate for waste, you're taking it away from me of how, how it gets dealt with. Other than the fact that I might just put it in the back of my trunk and take, you know, I mean, but.
Yep.
We are doing that today. Essentially, we're deciding for them no matter what we do. Correct, but this is changing the entire paradigm and going to, towards a methodology that nobody has had a part in dialogue for.
Yeah, and I would want to talk more through the, the first wrong doesn't make the second wrong right.
Exactly right.
So just because they strip lined it, I, I find it hard to believe that we're going to bury a bunch of plastic and that's better for whatever they do to it. I can be educated on that.
Yeah, well, no, the question would not be, burying the plastic wouldn't make it better. What would potentially make it better would be the funds that came with that trash, which now those communities would have the ability to put in all of the environmental controls.
I agree, but presuming they don't leak, they don't leach into water supplies, all the other fun things that happen when we start putting trash in the ground, right? Which is the reason we don't do it anymore here.
Exactly.
I imagine there's a significant environmental impact shipping our trash to another state.
I, I think, you know, even if you were to go down to the South Meadows, every load that goes in there is covered, but there's trash all over the side of the road. It's just, you get a certain amount that escapes and a similar thing would happen if it was sent by rail cars.
Plus the fuel and.
Yeah.
It's a bit like.
Exactly.
One, just a quick question.
Go ahead.
If you go to a different option, like away from, you know, decide not to go with MIRA or whatever, and MIRA covers your recycling, right? It's included, baked into the cost. If you go to another option, you also have to find a recycling option.
That is correct.
Correct.
And it's a huge part. So, so those are the options with MIRA. The other option is that we either go with other communities or we effectively go on our own. The one challenge will be, is there is some legislation in place right now that would put more heat to that comprehensive materials management strategy from DEEP. Right now, there are a number of communities that send their trash up into Massachusetts, especially the border towns. To them, you know, it's, it's two towns away. You can argue it makes perfect sense to them. There's no prohibitions against it right now. There's potential in the very near future that could be the case. So certainly, again, the decisions here are long-term and have some significant impact, so.
What's our timeline? What? That's a good question.
We've got till 10 o'clock.
We have 14 days, right?
Well, what, what, what MIRA has asked for at this point is they would like us to execute a non-binding letter of interest or statement of interest, which simply says, right now, we, we've talked about this as a community and we feel that we are still interested in seeing where they land with the Sasser Rooney deal. The challenge is going to be come June, they're going to be looking for a firm commitment.
But between now and June, there could be different legislation?
That would be the hope.
Okay.
Possibly different pricing. Can I, I don't know if we have any position to negotiate, but it would seem to me that the whole business of you talking about technology changing, that recycling could flip back on its head where it is profitable to get rid of it, technology, et cetera. I'm all for a firm making a profit, but if we're going to invest in this from a 30-year basis, I don't know how we don't share in some of that savings over the life of the contract.
In, 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 deep in one of their presentations, there is some, some comment that they have the ability to share some profits with us in the future.
Wait, that, to me, that has to be. That has to, to me, at least, good faith negotiation, whatever, if, if all of a sudden they're making 26 bucks a ton again.
Right.
Right. That better be coming back to the owners of the plant in some way, shape or form, I would think, in some percentages of 50%, is it 64, whatever it is, I think we can play ball on the deal.
Or if it is, if those dollars are not coming back to the town directly, they are being used to pay off the bonds.
Yeah.
To hold your tip fees down.
Lots of ways to do it, as long as.
Absolutely.
The consumer of this.
You've got to recapture.
It shouldn't go to dividends to the shareholders of the corporations doing this entirely.
Right.
I get the companies need to make money to stay in business and everything else and they're going to, they're potentially going to float some of this capital, but.
And again, we have the ability to submit back questions back to MIRA is one of the options. We have the option, and it was in your packet, yes, no, and questions. And I think these are some good questions. I think the other one that's interesting is right now, they're setting the $145 a ton plus cost of living increase. But the cost of living increase does not necessarily parallel the changes in tip fees associated with trash disposal.
Especially when you look at, go back to the slide where they have the breakdown of the different tons, not all of those are subject to a cost of living, you know.
This isn't social security.
Part of this is what radio can pay for electricity. That's, that's huge. And frankly, when the original CRA plants were built, they were specifically built, designed and subsidized through a higher electric rate that all of us paid throughout the state. And in the late 80s, that changed primarily because of a company called Enron. And I will stop at that point, but there, there is a whole history there.
You remind me, Mike.
I think there's a bunch of things that reasonable questions will get asked.
What, so we talked about, you know, we should, we should, we should, we should talk about the recovery potential of the recycling and put that.
And the power.
And the power. So the power as well, that's super, the two things of, the power is super interesting as far as, we were joking, if we, if, I mean, if we, if we execute all of our green initiatives in this country, then the price of power should always be low. It should never go up again, right? It's an interesting dichotomy here in the sense that. But the ability to fuel our, our own communities with the trash-generated or waste-generated power is very interesting to me, as far as the ecosystem. So that's one thing. The other thing I was curious about, what happens if, you know, 30 years is not that, 30 years is a long time, but it's not that long away from a gener, from generationally speaking. And what happens if we move to a different way of treating our waste? And we become less, become, we consume less waste because we're dealing with it in a different way. Not only is the packaging different, but the behavior patterns of our children and ourselves and our children likely and their children look at trash differently, waste differently and divide it anyway. So how is that? So if we start, if we start producing less waste ironically, then we're not feeding the system, that we're not feeding the animal, which then becomes, makes it less profitable operationally for them. So then how could, are there, or will there be language in it that says if we don't meet their, their waste needs, they could drive the tipage fee to twice as much? Does that make sense? It might make sense.
Yes, yes.
It's interesting, because like you were saying, the machine needs so much fuel a day.
Yeah.
And at a certain point, if it's not getting enough waste, they're going to have to shut it down, maybe shut down on weekends, maybe shut down. And then you start getting into that other challenge you said, which how do you provide enough power to the region? And then I think you have some comments and some, some long-term thoughts of.
Yeah, one of the things that the facilities have done is called put-or-pay contracts. You are committing to give us 100 tons. If you don't give us 100 tons, you didn't need to, and only give us 90, you get penalized for that 10 tons you don't bring us. You could conversely do the same kind of thing with recycling. Look at how the recycling coming out of the homes has changed over the last 20 years. Newspapers are smaller, plastic bottles are lighter, smaller. I mean, look how small the water bottle caps are now. All of those things have changed. And, and the newspapers being smaller, look at all the magazines that are no longer in business. So all of that has changed.
I take our, just my, my, my own family, we, there's six, eight of us in a, in a house, essentially in a house. And we generate less trash as relative to, I'm not walking around to get my neighbor's trash, but like, generally, my trash can, the tape, the top is closed on it, you know, once a week.
Words on the street, Chris.
You go around and look around, right? But we, because of my OCD and because of what of my kids, we have two recycling, two[1724.82] what of my kids, we have two recycling, two gigantic, because we're so neurotic and me neurotic about recycling. So it's interesting, transitioning to, now it's true, my wife would say, well, she buys just as much, but the, but we transitioned from trash to recycling as a waste, as a, as a tonnage issue. And I wonder if you keep that process, process going forward, you can't, you can't have a zero recycling charge, so.
And simplistically, we are not, this particular issue, we are not going to recycle our way out of this. We cannot recycle everything and have a zero trash.
Right.
I philosophically and professionally will tell you that is not going to happen, irregardless of my grandmother who could never understand why I made her stop using her 55-gallon barrel with the hole hooked in the bottom where she burned her trash for a year. The barrel burned out, she got a new one. It's just, it's not like that anymore.
Yeah, that's bad. Don't do that.
No, we don't.
Stuff wasn't made out of the same crap 50 years ago that is now.
You hear our concerns and especially a concern with hitting minimums or getting taxed on it, getting a fee on it.
Or not participating in the game. How we have to pay money because we have not come up with enough trash.
Right.
So would either of you gentlemen feel comfortable providing a recommendation based on what we've heard tonight?
Maybe, maybe what we could do, and I'm going to put this out there for everybody to think about. Give Tom your questions. Take this next week to get us questions. He and I can sit down, take those questions, get answers, and have those, and then come up with potential. Tom can work with Maria to come up. Obviously, I'm, I want to help. I want to get the town to a good place. I obviously can't vote on it, but the flipside is I'm happy to share my, my expertise in this.
I think you just suggested is appropriate because it keeps you one step removed from the recommendation piece.
And again, responding back to Mira, it's, it's a yes or no in support, but it's also the ability to ask questions and provide comments.
Not a lot of options here though, right? I mean, that's, it's bad or worse really is what we're looking at.
It's a lesser degree.
We can save a few bucks short-term, but this problem's going to hit us in the face no matter what.
It's bad or worse, it's, you know, if you figure each residential house is about a ton of MSW a year, and you're looking at.
98.
An additional $50.
Households, yep.
Per household per year in current dollars.
So in terms of options on our.
It's a lot of trash.
We wouldn't, as far as adopting a resolution, there's, doesn't seem like, is this when I would talk about this? Like, there doesn't seem to be a need to sign into entering any sort of agreement right now.
No, but we're, we're going to be back in two weeks. And that's where we're going to be looking to make the decision of either entering into the non-binding statement of interest or not entering.
Well, it's reject, it says reject, right? Is that, so, or, or you just do nothing and just not one of the people who shows an interest.
Right.
Right? Or if they go out to bid again and come out back with a better proposition, then you can, before June, you can get sign on.
Well, and if they go back out to bid, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be in June. What would happen is if a number of communities out of the 50 say, you know what, this, this is just too long of a commitment with too many unknowns, with too little background, we're not comfortable.
Right.
So then it would put Mira, and I'm sure they're, they're, they're smart guys. They've already started coming up with contingency plans. And it would be to put up most likely their own RFP. Again, there was two, two other, two other firms that had submitted originally to see if they could work out a better deal, potentially with one of those two firms, or there's really a third big player in the industry. And again, it may be a combination of a short-term transfer station, because again, these things are going to take time to build. There's also this, the fact is even if they have to build a short-term transfer station at the facility, it may be a good benefit to them long-term so that if and when a catastrophe happens, they have more options in their toolbox. If you can imagine last summer, they were literally stuffing their facility with trash as it kept coming in and, and they were at capacity.
So my, and I'm not ready to do it tonight, but I was thinking that I'd rather drive this conversation and then make as, as an informed decision as we can in June of, and I'm not suggesting we, we, we say yes right away, but keep this conversation going with our questions, with our concerns, and with a very honest, we cannot sign off unless you deal with the following. And knowing they're probably not going to deal with the following by June, but again, being a, having a seat at the table from a negotiation, if there is any room to have it, is, is where I'd rather do than just outright reject it and leave it to other people.
So if I'm hearing right, it may be to, to structure a place where we agree to the non-binding statement of interest with a very strong statement that these things must be met, or we will simply not.
We will not sign off in June on the long, and you know, the 30 years, all the things that we talked about, and again, with additional questions. And again, everyone's free to do what they want, but I'm always a proponent of let's, let's keep going with the conversation until it's time to make the decision.
You could keep going with the conversation and not sign the non-binding too, can't you?
I, I think that's a good question. If a community chooses not to sign the statement of interest, does that necessarily preclude them?
Shut us out from the conversation?
And I, I would tend to believe that they would not be looking to, to force any communities out.
Yeah, I would think, I mean, right.
But I think.
And what is the point of this?
We have a much stronger stand by showing some interest. These are our concerns and continuing to have the conversation, even if, I mean, this is a non-binding letter.
Yeah, and I don't want to give them the appearance that we're leading them on. Again, I have no, in its current form, there's no way I would vote for this. But I just want to make sure that we have an informed seat at the table. So that could be the first question. How do, how do we stay engaged with the conversation? Because we're going to have to deal with this either next week, next month, and I mean, they could raise our tip fee to a buck 20 next month, next year, right? And we got to deal with the opt-out and.
At the end of this month, the tip fee could go up right now to 101.
Right.
From 83. And then we have to make a decision whether we want to opt out now, because I
just heard 95 is the market rate.
Exactly right.
Right?
Last year, when the plant went down, we were paying a higher tip fee because I had to get rid of the trash. Once my trucks fall, I don't have any choices.
And, and they were shipping it out of state for, I think, 105 to 110 a ton, because that was their only option at that point.
So if I, if, let me get, hopefully I get this right. If I had a, if somebody stopped me tomorrow and go, what were you guys talking about last night? I think what we're talking about here is if we, if we accepted what's been put in front of us today, just sort of in the black and white form that it is, that we, we would, my response would be, will, would be, we made the decision to reinvest in the methodology and the, the method and process that you are currently having your waste treated or disposed of. Number one. And number two, so we're not changing that way that it's, 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 it's disposed of. And we chose to invest in that. And number two, we entered into a long-term contract, which would very much like, is very much likely going to increase, we could just say simplistically, it's going to double the bill that you get currently for your trash. No?
No, because there are so many other costs. Remember, that's only the cost when, when, your trash hauler gets down to Hartford, they weigh his truck, going to use round numbers, it was 10 tons, 10 times 145 is what he would owe. He's got to charge you more than that because he had to pay for that half million dollar truck and the driver and the insurance and everything else.
And margin, so a portion of it goes.
So did we say that we're talking about like $100 a house?
I think we're talking about right now closer to 50?
50 to $80 a ton without taking into account what's happening with the recycling.
Right.
Is recycling going to be at what rate? That, that's where this could get.
Right.
It could get up.
Well, that's, so what, again, where we would agree to be signing onto the current, resigning up with the current methodology of how waste is dealt with in our community, with no real improvement, I would say, from a efficiency standpoint, right? It's not, it's not getting any, it's not getting exponentially cleaner as far as what the technology.
I'm sure slightly. I mean, again, you're, you're talking state-of-the-art technology.
But we, but, but we've signed, but additionally, we've signed on to, to this methodology and this organization for another 30 years, and the financial impact would be potentially, how much you said?
50 to 80 per household.
Per, per annum?
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And with that, because I, I see where you're going with this, you get this slide up here, which basically says Connecticut is a leader in the, in the Western Hemisphere in terms of recyclables. It's talking about the fact that you are going to be doing the right things environmentally long-term or the best things you can possibly do. We'd love to all not generate trash, but we do. This, the, the one positive I can tell you with Mira is you are going to get the most environmentally responsible disposal of that waste.
Relatively, relative to our pure samples in the area.
And then you're going to know what your, your fees are going to be for the, the next 30 years.
But just conceptually, and again, to, to just build on what you said, so if we do, if it costs $80 a household, worst case, 90, 100 households, $800,000 tax increase on our town.
Not, not a direct tax increase, because remember, we're a subscription service.
Understood.
Impact to our residents.
Yeah, that's what they would feel.
Basically, for all, for simplification, it, it would be like an $800,000 tax increase.
We're agreeing to increase their household cost by.
Yeah, 800,000. If that, and if that tip fee stayed the same for the next 30 years, it's a $24 million increase. So that's what we're talking about right now.
Potentially.
And that's them.
Which is why we're talking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I have to be honest, I'm glad you guys stuck in. I know this is a complicated subject.
This is important. This is one of the things we actually do.
So, oh my gosh, I'm killing you people. So the, the, for the towns, so the, so the two forms, I've got to give, give credit to Wendy. She gave me a lot of information to, to look through, so I appreciate that. Non-bias, just, just general information learned from. And the, so our town is subscription-based with our friendly neighborhood trash haulers. And then other towns, the cost of municipal waste is baked into the, the service that they get from the town, which is still generally outsourced from, from a hauler's hauling standpoint.
Unless you're into a small city, yes.
The methodology, yes, but the methodology, it's really occurring the same way. It's just who am I paying? Am I paying, am I taxpaying? Am I paying direct bill? So is it possible? Or who is, I'm sorry, Mike, and it's, but is, is the, with the dynamics for the towns that are, that are service-based, that it's tax-based, taxed, a taxed service-based service? Is their dynamic going to be potentially more risky or less risky? Or ours as, or is it a wash? It's a tighter wash? You see what I'm saying?
I'm, I'm going to say it's a wash, but the only difference being in communities where it's tax-based, you're going to see your taxes go up. Where in communities that are subscription service, you're going to see your household cost go up, but you're going to blame your hauler for raising their rates. In many cases, you're not going to know where it came from.
And so the, my taxes would go up roughly by, it would be the same $80.
If you lived in one of those other communities, exactly right. Yep.
I want to be careful. I want to ask Tom this question. Mike, don't answer this. If we moved to the municipality taking over the service and contracting with a hauler, do we get the benefit of aggregation here in any way? Are we still in the same negotiating position, whether we?
Same negotiating, because again, as a town, we, we have the legal right to flow control our residential waste. The only argument, two arguments that can be made for the town getting into the trash business would be, you, you can argue that an efficiency, because you would have one truck going down each neighborhood each week and that's it. And there wouldn't be the case of two different haulers or three different haulers going down the same street.
From a, from a Mira standpoint, there's no benefit or savings. It'd purely be from the, the hauler's cost and who we chose and how that RFP worked.
Exactly right. And, and the haulers again are registered with us and they have to bring it to Mira.
Right.
And then the other downside is if we did go to that other model where, where it was a service that we bid out and we managed, it would be, there would be a, a small increase in the amount of work from, from town staff. Nothing better now than when somebody calls me and complains about something wrong with, with their trash collection. Sorry, sorry, Mike, my answer is the same all the time. Fire them. And you get a big pause. I'm like, if you don't like the people picking up your trash, you have the right to fire them and hire somebody else.
Right.
Right now, it's their choice.
Right. Yeah, we're not driving that.
That's right.
Okay. That's important. I appreciate that context.
Any other, Maria?
I just quickly want to add, alternative A that Mira is looking into is asking the state to step up, right, and support this regional facility with some bond, funds to help with this capital improvement. I think this is a good example of regionalism. The state is always encouraging and asking municipalities to engage in regional efforts. So in whatever commentary that we send back, I think it's important to say, hey, this is an important regional initiative. We think the state needs to step up here. But I think however we can help in terms of advocacy or supporting this initiative at the state level, I think would be very helpful in that we should, again, offer assistance in that.
Yeah, I agree.
Agree.
It's a great point.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Tom. You took a, a complex topic.
Thank you.
And made it very understandable. No easy decisions, but really appreciate the dialogue tonight.
Appreciate it. And the other thing, I'm, I'm sure the PowerPoint's going to be available. We'll probably put that up on our website.
We should just, we'll send questions to you.
Send questions to me. I'll aggregate the questions, probably, and work on getting answers throughout the week.
Yep. And if our residents have any questions, send them to me. I'll send them to you. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Anybody come back, guys?
Please, Mike, welcome. Have a seat.
I suppose.
So also under presentations tonight is a proclamation for the kickoff of the 2020 census every 10 years. This is something that our federal government does to count everybody in our country. We're going to be doing a lot of things via social media, using all of our ways of getting out the word to encourage everyone in Simsbury to be counted. The census occurs mid to late spring, but as a first step in your packets is a proclamation just in support of the census. And I wanted to see if there would be support in my signing that proclamation. So would there be a motion to do so?
I'll move that. I have a question once the second comes in.
I'll second, okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, and your question?
So it says in the submission, states that do not get accurate counts of all residents are actually penalized? How do they know?
I was wondering.
Isn't that the whole point of the census?
It's a good question.
I'm sorry.
More of a rhetorical question.
But in all seriousness, if the number's wrong, then use the right number. And, okay.
Point well taken.
That's, I would love to, anyway.
The labor's coming out of Iowa.
Hey, that's, it's not, it's not too soon for that one.
All right. All, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to my first selectmen's report, I'll keep it as brief as possible. We are approaching the time of year when the town and the Board of Education develop their respective budgets. And in the weeks and months to come, I'm going to be providing updates here, but just a few key dates I want to highlight. I believe it's our next meeting, February 24th at 6:00 PM. Maria, the town manager, will be presenting her proposed budget to the Board of Selectmen. And then on March 7th, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, we'll be right here going through that budget in much more detail in our all-day budget workshop. Another date to keep on the calendar, March 17th, the Board of Selectmen presents its budget to the Board of Finance. And I will vow not to make Sean do that alone for four hours this year.
I had fun with it.
Unless you want to.
I think it was four and a half.
Okay. And then April 7th, the Board of Finance holds their public hearing. There's also a new step that we haven't done in the past. The Board of Finance on March 24th will be hearing about our and the Board of Education's capital priorities. So they wanted to have a special meeting just to focus on those things. So that's a new step.
And that's just versus including it in the normal presentation?
Yeah. And I'd just say, I know that I join my colleagues on the Board of Selectmen in welcoming and encouraging your feedback throughout this process. You can share your priorities with any of us via email, public audience, attending the Board of Finance's budget hearing, lots of ways to do it. We have four work groups, the Board of Selectmen does, a couple of dates. One of our work groups is developing an ordinance to regulate the market for short-term rentals such as Airbnb. Their next meeting is February 21st at 8:00 AM. Another work group is developing a wildlife feeding ordinance. That next meeting is scheduled for February 28th at 8:00 AM in Town Hall. Our school district is in the process of completing a facility study and developing a long-range plan for managing a growing school age population and aging buildings. The Board of Education is in the process of conducting a survey to better understand the priorities of our residents. I encourage everyone to take that survey. If anyone has trouble finding it, let me know and I can point you in the right direction. In the online version, I link to it. The next public forum is scheduled for March 4th. It's at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium. And the Board of Education is also hosting a series of neighborhood meetings, which are opportunities to learn about the options and provide feedback in a more intimate setting. The next one is at Squadron Line School, February 14th. That's this Friday at 9:00 AM. Central School, February 19th at 6:00 PM. Terafill School, February 20th at 6:00 PM. And I'll, I'll stop right there. Let me turn it over to Maria for the town manager's report.
Great, thank you. Good evening. A quick update for you on our bond sale. We did have that on January 30th, and it resulted in a winning true interest rate of 1.56% for the 15-year issuance. This is part one of the Henry James Renovation Project issuance, just a really outstanding rate we received. As you'll recall, last meeting, I did report that we had maintained our AAA bond rating, and we were assigned a stable outlook. Along with this sale, we received a bond premium of just over $1 million. This can be used essentially as mill rate stabilization. We can use this money to offset future debt service costs related to this issuance. So really want to commend Amy Meriwether, our finance director, and Melissa Appleby for their help throughout this process. At your desks this evening, the Small City Certifying Resolution, which is in your packet for an upcoming item, just a very minor typo. We found an incorrect date in that resolution, so the correct date is provided at your desk this evening. A reminder that the legislative breakfast being held tomorrow, February 11th, from 8:00 to 10:00 AM at the Simsbury Housing Authority, that is being sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and our ED. Authority, that is being sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and our EDC. Our legislative representatives will be present, and again, hope that folks will be able to join us for that. For departmental news and notes, very good news to report. Community and Social Services heard back already about the grant that they applied for through Amplify, which was $5,000 in grant funding to help with the response to the opioid crisis. We are happy to report that we were one of 14 communities that have received that award. So, good, good work to Social Services. Thank you. Our town clerk's office, town clerk Erica Butler, has completed the ED 626 form. She will be submitting that to the Secretary of State's office. And it does show that we have a sufficient number of voting machines for the four voting districts in town. And under special events, those are all items we've covered previously, so I will conclude my report this evening.
Sorry, we didn't coordinate this week. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to Selectment Action. Item A is tax refund requests. Is there a motion effective February 10th, 2020, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $31,158.41 and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item B, I'm glad Cheryl's back. It's the 350th Anniversary Gala. So the Steering Committee would like to hold a gala at the conclusion of the festivities in November. And for this event to move forward, we need to authorize the town manager to sign the contract. I wanted to see, Cheryl, if you wanted some free publicity, just to talk a little bit about what this event is.
Cheryl?
Yeah.
Can I use that air?
Just for a microphone.
In Bainberry Court, wherever that is.
Nice try. You've been up there already today.
I don't want to be a Tom Bryant. I'm talking.
That was a long presentation.
It was.
It wasn't his fault, though.
Hi, yes.
Hello.
So the gala, we have tentatively set it for November 13th. The idea behind the gala is that this is going to be the culmination of all of our celebrations. We have a proposed contract with the Riverview for the space. We're hoping we get at least 350 people. But the idea is just to have a community celebration for the end of the 350. We have, you know, we'll be inviting our sponsors, of course. We will be able to thank all of those people who contributed. Over the course of this year, we have, like, the Simsbury Camera Club is going to be photographing all the events, so we will be showing all the, you know, a slideshow. We're going to have local bands providing the music. So we're really excited about this, and, you know, it just gives everybody a chance to dress up, go out, have some fun, and head towards the end of this really exciting year.
Great.
The event is going to be cosponsored by the Rotary Club. Simsbury Grand B, is that I saying that right? The Rotary Club has graciously agreed to be our partner in this event. While their budget for this fiscal year is already set, so they are unable to provide the deposit at this time, which is what we're asking you to do tonight, they will be providing us with volunteers. They will be handling ticket sales. So there's a lot of things that they have volunteered to do in the spirit of their service, which we are very grateful for. So it's really a great, you know, collaborative event, and I'm sure, over the course of planning it, we're going to bring in other Simsbury partners, you know, to provide different things that are going to be used for the gala.
All right. Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Anything I can?
I just have two. So the, the contract says 2K for booking deposit, and then 3K for the second deposit. We're only talking about four tonight?
The 2,000 is actually for one room, but that is doubled. We use the grand ballroom, which is what we are anticipating.
Okay.
So that's why we're asking for four.
And then there's a second deposit coming later?
That will be, yes, that'll be the second one.
Okay. And then, I'm sure we're, we're using our tax-exempt status for this?
Well, we don't have a tax-exempt status.
The town of Simsbury does.
The town does.
The town does.
Well, the other thing about this is the, this is a ticketed event, so ticket sales will offset that. So this is not going to be an expense to the town. It's going to be netted out. It's going to be a zero.
We're going to be reimbursed, you're saying?
Exactly. Well, it's coming out of the 350 special fund, if I understand correctly. We have already collected enough money to cover the deposit out of the 350 funds we have already accumulated.
No, and I'm good. I'm looking for everybody to make more money, because we're not going to give 6.5% to the state, because we're the town of Simsbury, and we shouldn't have to pay taxes. So.
Well, we do have a tax number, right?
Yeah.
We have a tax-exempt ID status. Correct.
Tax, exactly. Yeah.
My point is, you should be able to collect more money on the ticket sales and not have to give 6.5% to the state of Connecticut.
Well, the idea of getting all these sponsorships is to lower the price of the tickets, so that we can make this more money.
Trying to get you more money. Yes.
Do you even, do you know yet what you'll be asking for?
Well, our contract, contracted price, I think in the contract in front of you is $85 a head. We anticipate that there might be expenses on top of that for the entertainment and, you know, other things, incidentals that might come along. We would like to keep it, you know, $100 would be. But, you know, we don't know. If we get very generous sponsors, we, you know, our goal is to lower the cost of everything, so that more people can participate.
Okay.
That's our goal.
And then, just for the, the doomsday that you don't get enough people, you're just, you lose the deposit out of the fund?
Well, I don't think nobody's going to show.
Well, it said you have to have a certain amount of people.
John and I are going.
So, yeah.
You got two tickets there.
He's driving.
But you just have to meet the minimum.
I suppose there would be a doomsday.
Yeah, the minimum number of people have to agree to, and then you're good.
That's true.
Okay. That's true.
Great. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Okay. Is there a motion effective?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The motion effective tonight to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the proposed contract with the Riverview for the Simsbury 350th Anniversary Gala.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Oh, item C is also 350th-related. The committee has been soliciting sponsorships to support the four main events, and is planning, as we just talked about, to make those events as affordable as possible, thanks, thanks to these generous donations. We received a donation from Vincent Funeral Home. Is there a motion effective February 10th, 2020, to accept $13,350 from Vincent Funeral Home as sponsorship for the 350th Anniversary Celebration Events?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Is there any conversation?
With our thanks.
Thanks.
Cheryl?
I just want to point out that of those four events, the gala is the only one that we are planning on collecting a ticket price for so far.
Okay.
So, everything else will be free to the public.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item D, we've made you wait a long time, is the Small Cities.
He knows everything about trash.
You do?
Me too.
It took us an hour to get there, but it did. This, so, you know, piggybacking on the public hearing, we heard this evening, if the board is comfortable moving forward, the following motion would be in order. I'll read the motion. Would there be a motion to adopt the attached resolution authorizing the town manager to file an application for the Connecticut Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program, and authorizing the town manager to act as the signatory and authorized representative for the town on all relevant documents? So moved.
Second.
Is there any further conversation?
I have one question. If you don't get this money, you can't do any of these things? I mean, okay, so, so you're kind of on your own?
It's really important.
Yes. Okay. And thank you. Thank you for all your time.
Yeah. Any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, guys.
Oh, I think that there's a.
Part E.
Yeah, part E. There we go. That's where I got lost. Is there a motion effective February 10th, 2020, to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute any and all application materials for the 2020 Small Cities Program on behalf of the town of Simsbury? And should the town be awarded a Small Cities grant, authorize Ms. Capriola to execute any and all documents related to the program implementation? And further, to designate Town Manager Maria Capriola as the environmental certifying officer for this program?
I move. I'll second that with the note that it's Capriola.
Yeah, that's right.
Yep, Maria Capriola.
Just wanted to make sure.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
She's our town manager. I'm not sure who's.
I got to meet this Caprioli person.
Yeah.
I don't know who Caprioli is.
Who it's telling she works for.
Yeah.
Item F, I'm very excited about this one.
Yeah.
Darius Rucker is coming to see Larry.
Big deal.
Yeah.
Showing our age up here.
I know, right?
Free sales for the board.
Yeah, so anyway.
We pay, we pay double.
I think I've tipped my hand on this, but we need to, for this move forward, we need to approve the public gathering permit. And this is a little different than the Beach Boys in that they're expecting a larger crowd between, I think, what is it, 6,000 to 7,000?
Seven to eight.
Or seven to eight. Yeah.
That sunshine, Derek.
Yeah.
We get that now.
So, Missy, would you mind just for the free publicity?
Yeah. Basically, we just wanted to talk about this one, because this one's cool.
Good evening. Thanks for your time. For those who don't know, I am Missy Danuno. I know that I have not stood before some of the new board members, so pleasure to see you here. I am the executive director at the Performing Arts Center, and we are super excited this year to announce that Darius Rucker will be coming pending your approval of the public gathering permit. We entered last year into a three-year license agreement with Trantolo and Trantolo, the law firm, to bring three years' worth of concerts to benefit the Boys and Girls Club of Hartford, as they are building a new South End facility, which they are breaking ground on in the spring of this year, actually.
Nice.
So it's very exciting for us. Trantolo has really, really been very happy with what's been done thus far. They were very happy with Beach Boys. They were very happy with the support of the town and all of the folks who work with the town, who work with us to make sure that people are happy down there and that we have some great culture here in town. So I just want to thank you for that. But they are always looking each year to go bigger and better. So this year, Darius Rucker, obviously, bigger and better. We're going to bring lots of new people into town who probably maybe haven't been here before, which is always a good thing. And with that good weather, we could get max capacity with this type of a name. So we're very, very excited about it.
And there's fireworks.
And there are fireworks afterwards. Absolutely, yeah. So last year with Beach Boys, they did a fabulous show out of the lot C and D. So we work very closely with the fire department, because obviously, there are safety concerns. So there are regulations within the state. I work with Kevin Kowalski, and we work with our shooter from American Thunder Fireworks to make sure that we are maintaining the appropriate distance of patrons versus where we're shooting those fireworks. So you'll see there's a condition in there that we're responsible to work with the fire department to make sure that all of that is met, and that we put up the temporary fencing necessary to maintain that distance.
Is it, is it worth, you, I think, is it worth stating, and hopefully I'm correct, and please correct me, that's what I'm here for, is that when you, you talk about that we've entered into an agreement with an outside organization to help us push forward this cultural, a cultural event?
Yes.
And I just want to make sure that the town, town folks realize that although we are bringing in Trantolo, we've partnered with Trantolo, which I don't think everybody actually is clear and understands.
Correct.
That the revenue ecosystem for this is actually for charity purposes. There is no, there is no profiteering or profit gaining for any of the entities that are involved other than their philanthropic.
Correct.
Indications. This is about bringing cul, this is about bringing culture into the town and continuing to elevate the experience.
Exactly.
I think it's important for people to know that.
That's a good point.
Yeah. And as a nonprofit ourselves, obviously, giving back, obviously, we want people to give to us so that we can then give back, because that's what it's all about in the circle of our little nonprofit life.
Two completely selfish questions. When does the tickets go on sale?
So, that's an excellent question. They're waiting. I will probably talk to them either tomorrow or Wednesday to solidify that. They have to wait for your approval, obviously, to set that date. So, they knew that as long as there was no snow tonight to cancel this meeting, and we got the approval, that they will likely go on sale probably end of the week or early next week, if I had to guess. I don't have an exact date, because again, it's pending this approval.
Okay.
And because Eric's birthday is coming up, is there going to be a meet and greet package that could be purchased?
Platinum package.
A host of packages.
Ticketmaster's Platinum. Is there, but you're, but there, I also think you have a whole other, you have a whole other series that you have planned for the, for the summer.
For the summer season.
Yeah. But it hasn't, that hasn't been fully formatted yet, or fully, has it?
Well, it's, it's all in the works. So, a number of the public gathering permits, there is a little shift in our contract, so you're not necessarily seeing everything come through now. Maria is able to sign off on things that happen that are kind of those annuals, say the same kind of thing. This one came before you, because obviously.
Size and scope and bigger, yeah.
Exactly. Yeah, and there will be another one coming to you, which I'll give you a little preview, because it'll be coming to you probably the next Board of Selectmen meeting, maybe the one after. Connecticut Valley Fest, which is the local Freemasons, is looking to bring the Spin Doctors in this year.
Oh, cool.
So, the 90's fans.
It's like all 90's music.
He's very excited.
So, we have some really nice things coming down the line. The circus will come back again this year. So, it'll be a really great.
Spin Doctor.
He's going to be out there with his, his copy of Crack Beer, was it a Crack Beer Mirror? That was, that was their, putting the blowfish.
Yeah, that's right.
This is just Darius.
Okay.
This is, this is really.
We can't forget about the business.
Guys, we're getting here till midnight. Let's go.
Let's go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Appreciate you doing this.
Missy, thank you so much. Is there a motion effective February 10th, 2020, to approve the public gathering application for the Darius Rucker concert and authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit, with the condition that the Simsbury Metting Performing Arts Center coordinate with representatives of the fire district concerning placement of temporary structures along the eastern edge of the facility?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, again, you and your board, and Trantolo and Trantolo, a lot of hard work that went into this. Item G is the 2020 Distracted Driving High-Visibility Enforcement Grant. This is something that our police department is interested in applying for. Is there a motion effective February 10th, 2020, to submit the 2020 Distracted Driving High-Visibility Enforcement Grant Application and authorize Maria Capriola, Town Manager, to execute the grant, the grant application, and, in the event that we get it, to accept the grant award and execute all related documents?
So moved.
I'll second.
Is there any questions about this item?
For father.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Everybody write down the dates.
Item H?
We've had board members pinched before on this. Not any current board members.
Yeah. Draft debt management policy. In your packets is, is a draft of the debt management policy. We formed a work group in collaboration with the Board of Finance. Thank you, Sean and Chris, for representing the Board of Selectmen on that work group. Debt management.
Oh, debt management.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Item F. Is there anything that either of you wanted to, wanted to add?
Leave it to Sean. Talk about that one.
It was a robust conversation with the chairman and vice chairman of the Board of Finance. I think we resolved any outstanding philosophical questions, and I think got to a good place in terms of, nobody's intending to do anything different from a practice standpoint. We're really just codifying what we've, we've always done, but, but aligning the responsibility where the charter says it is. And again, what I mean by that is, this board has always signed off on the debt via motion after it's been approved at a public hearing. So, nothing is changing as a result of that process. This board and future boards, I think, are going to be well-served by this debt policy, because it clearly lays out the, the financial philosophy of prior Board of Selectmen, current Board of Selectmen, prior Board of Finance, et cetera, with how we have all worked thoughtfully together to try to make sure that we're being responsible, that we're getting that 1-5-5 rate, which is due to the management of the town, the management of this board, the management of the Board of Finance, and the Board of Ed. It's not by mistake that we get that. It's because we pass these types of policies. So I know there's some potential uneasiness with folks in terms of, hey, we might, are we moving responsibility or changing things? we moving responsibility or changing things? Not the intention of this, it's just really to, to put into writing something that we don't have to do. We could just leave it to however every board feels like it in the future. But I think it's really responsible of us to, to lay out definitively for our taxpayers, for the rating agencies, for our staff, for everybody, how we intend to do debt, how we intend to manage it in this town, and the high degree of thoughtfulness we do put towards it. So I think this policy and collaboration with the Board of Finance really does hit all those points.
Okay. Well played, Sean, thank you. Are there any questions?
I certainly could comment that the, the, as a, as a passive participant at that meeting, because of, it is my, I was going up against some heavyweights as far as their years of experience, it's pretty impressive to see the work done and the input by, by Rob Pomeroy, and by Lisa Hevner, and Sean as well. And the town really benefits from having those types of individuals who work really well together, and also based, and really take, really benefiting from their, their intensity to do the right thing, and their knowledge. So I really, I appreciate you guys, what you guys pushed forward for us.
Thanks. That was fun.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Is there a motion effective February 10th, 2020, to adopt the debt management policy as presented?
I'll move that.
I'll second that.
Any further conversation? All in favor?